Emeryville City Council, special meeting. And no need for roll call, we're all still present. This is the time for public comments. Any public comments?
About items not on the agenda?
Right.
Last Saturday, the City Hall sponsored a meeting of residents, anybody who wants to come to this chamber to discuss the Horton Street Bike Boulevard traffic calming idea as proposed, as our bicycle pedestrian plan calls for. So we had a big meeting, a lot of people here, a lot of residents here on a Saturday morning. And we voted. Councilmember Davis was there and she wisely thought that instead of just talking about it, we should get, the council should get an idea about what the people there thought, what they seem to like, or what they seem to support. And so votes were cast. And the paradigm that won was the so-called Level 5 traffic calming. That got the most number of votes. And what that is, is our diverters to be placed on the street as the bicycle pedestrian plan calls for. There was a smaller number of people at the meeting that thought it was a good idea to not do that, but instead to do so-called Level 4 traffic calming, which is not a diverter, but it was another way to slow traffic down. But clearly, what came in first place by sheer dint of the numbers was the Level 5 traffic calming diverters. I just spoke with Maurice Kaufman, the, I guess, the Public Works Director, and he's having trouble remembering this. And I'm having trouble that he's having trouble. Because it's not a matter of debate, it's just a matter, it's a factual thing. And we can check it by the videotape that was taken of it, plus also, a recording of the votes happened by a city official that was sitting here at the dais. So it's, there's no mystery. We know what came and got the most number of votes is Level 5 traffic calming, the diverters. And yet, Mr. Kaufman seems to, has no recollection and no intellectual curiosity about it. And I would think, since he ran the meeting, I would think he would remember, or at least have, have a desire to find out if that's what I'm alleging is true, but instead it seems to be no intellectual curiosity. So this concerns me. This makes me think that the function of the meeting was, you know, public information, and that the will of the people at that meeting is not going to be assuaged. And it's disturbing to me. It's anti-democratic. And I hope Mr. Kaufman can review the videotape of the meeting and realize that in fact there's Level 5 traffic calming diverters where the, who's got the most number of votes. And I hope that he can accurately relay that information to the council, because we know, his job is to provide accurate and objective analysis. And so hopefully that will happen.
Thank you. Your time is up. Anyone else? Public comment for items not on the agenda? Or do you want to speak to the agendized item? Okay, so we'll have a time for that as well. Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay. Let's go ahead and move forward. Charlie and Michelle?
Okay. Yes.
Oh, Maru, I'm sorry.
Maru Desai will make the staff presentation on the study session on the Christie Avenue Park, proposed redesign and expansion.
Good evening, Mayor Asher and council members. I'd like to give an outline of the staff presentation. I'll begin by giving you an update on the approved Marketplace PUD program. This will be followed by a discussion on the park design and the tree removal associated with it. And then I'll talk about conformity of the proposal with the general plan and its consistency with the approved PUD. Then I'll talk about its conformity with our Parks and Recreation Plan. And then I will give you an update on the comments made by, at the community meeting and at the various committees, including the Planning Commission. And I'll end my presentation by posing a few questions for the council to consider for which we want input. So this is the approved Marketplace at build-out. Just to get oriented, you have the railroad on the top, Christie Avenue at the bottom of your screen, and Shellmount is right here. So this plan was approved back in 2008, and it involved redevelopment of the surface parking lots, as well as the UA Theater site. It also included realignment of Shellmount Street, as well as introduction of two new street segments of 63rd Street and this new segment here, which we are calling it 62nd Street at this point. This development includes about 675 units, around 180,000 square feet of retail space, and 120,000 square feet of office. Since 2008, in terms of implementation of the plan, this is the progress that has been made. Currently, under construction on the ground is the building we are calling it 64th and Christie Building. It is a 193-unit residential alone building, which is under construction, and we're expecting it to be occupied by the end of this year or early, early in January. Apart from this, this building, nothing else has moved on the site in terms of the approved PUD. However, there have been a number of study sessions that the Planning Commission has held. And the first one was back in December of last year, where there was a proposal for a grocery store on this site here, and a garage on the site here, and that also included the realignment of the Shellmount Street. These proposals, at the moment, are on hold. The next study, set of study sessions that the Planning Commission saw were last week. And they looked at two buildings. One is what we call the Shellmount Site. It's a residential building and, and a building on the Theater Site, which is also a residential building. Both buildings are a little over 200 units. And the Shellmount Building also has some amount of ground floor retail space. The Commission gave their comments. We expect the applicant to incorporate them, and we're expecting another round of study sessions sometime in December or January. In the meantime, regarding the park, the Planning Commission has seen a study session on, on this proposal back in July, and it went through various committees as well. And this is, this is the applicant coming back with the preliminary concept design for your consideration. This plan will be seen by the Planning Commission on 30th of this month, so they have not seen what you're going to see today. They will review it at the October 30th meeting. And it is right now tentatively scheduled for a decision at the December 11th meeting. The reason, before I move on to the park, just as a note, the reason you are looking at this proposal is because this is a city park. You will not be asked to approve this park, the decision of all the FDPs on this site with the Planning Commission. This was a change that was made when we adopted new zoning regulations last year, where the FDPs, the final decision makers, are the Planning Commission, and unless it is appealed, it is only then, in that situation, that it will come to the council. So this is an overlay of the existing situation. As you can see, we have the existing Christie Park, and the proposal is to expand it to the west, which is currently a parking lot. The existing park is about 0.8 acres, and the expansion will add another, a little less than half an acre. So the total site is about 1.2527 acres. So this is the preliminary park design concept. It's a mix of active and passive users. You have a dog park at the northern end, and children's playground on the southern end. The area in the middle is used for lawns, and is conceived to be used for passive purposes. The main route that connects Christie Avenue to the Marketplace Development is this path across the street. I'm now going to go into the various details of the different elements within the park, as the applicant has a detailed presentation on that. And I will move on to other things that I would like your attention at. As part of this plan, about 56 trees are proposed to be removed. An arborist report prepared by the applicant was submitted as part of your packet. And that report was then peer-reviewed by the city arborist. And this is a preliminary report by the city arborist, who is still working on producing a full report, but we wanted some input from the city arborist in terms of the removal of the trees. And the conclusion of the city arborist, which I believe Charlie emailed to you this morning, and you'll see a copy on your dais as well, the city arborist recommends that additionally nine more trees, and these are the ones in red, which can be preserved, and that's their recommendation. The applicant is also preserving one tree, which is right here, which is 47. In terms of conformity with general plan, the general plan designation of the existing park is park open space, and that of the expansion area is mixed use with residential. And the zoning is, again, of the existing park, park and open space, and for the expanded area is the approved PUD. The proposed park conforms with the approved PUD in terms of the location, size, as well as the inclusion of the pedestrian access through the park connecting Christie Avenue to the public market. The approved PUD included a, or includes a 6,000 square feet of retail path within, within the park, but this path is omitted in the current proposal. We believe that the proposed park is in compliance, as there are adequate retail uses near the park, so the removal of the 6,000-feet retail path within the park would not be detrimental to the general idea of, of the PUD. So we, as you know, we also have a Parks and Recreation Plan, and some of the recommended park program in this plan includes playful children, socializing and relaxing, picnicking, a lunch area, and special events. In addition, the plan also identifies some potential program elements, and that includes recreation with dogs. There are certain site-specific recommendations for this site included in the City Parks Plan, and these include integration of art to create play features, as well as developing the park portion of the 62nd Street and frontage on Christie Avenue as plaza space with seating. And as you listen to the details by the applicant of the park, you will see that the proposal is in compliance with what is recommended in the city's Parks and Recreation Plan. A community meeting was held in May. About 25 people attended. Some of the comments included retaining the existing connection through the park from Christie Avenue to the public market, which has been retained. Creating a space for a dog park, as well as a children's play area. And also, it was noted that in addition to children's play area, space was needed for adults for relaxation and generally to hang out. Importance of good lighting was emphasized as well. The Parks and Recreation Committee looked at this project twice. Once at the June 18th meeting, and they made a number of recommendations. And these recommendations have been reported in the staff report, and they have been incorporated in the proposal that you see today. The current plan that you're looking at was reviewed by the committee on September, and they were satisfied with the plan and did not have any further comments regarding design. And they recommended that the applicant try to save few trees if possible. The proposal also was reviewed by BPAC yesterday, and they recommended to include some bike racks within the park, and to add tables in the seating areas, and to use more native, bay-friendly plant material. As I've mentioned, the Planning Commission did review this project at the July 24th meeting, and it's scheduled, like I'd mentioned, for the second study session later this month, and then for a decision at the December meeting. They suggested that a non-circular dog park be separated from a children's area, and this comment has been incorporated. They mentioned the need for a mix of creative and standard play structures, a flexible lawn area to be used for small events instead of a space for movie screenings, and to include more trees, pole lights, and bike racks. So we come to the last part. This is where we need your input. First is regarding tree removal. Is the proposed tree removal acceptable to the council? In terms of program elements, as you listen to the applicant's description of the program elements within the park, you want to keep in mind whether these are appropriate for the site, and does the council wish to add or exclude any features or elements? And finally, are the proposed plan palette and hardscape materials acceptable to the council? So that concludes my presentation, and we would like to have your comment on the issues that I just mentioned, as well as any other issues that you may have. So that concludes my presentation. I am available for questions. Otherwise, the applicant does have a presentation.
Do we want to hear from the applicant first, or? Okay, let's go ahead and hear from the applicant. Thank you, Maru.
Good evening. My name's Mark Stephan. I'm the president of City Center Realtill Partners. We're the owners of Public Market. And as Maru has stated, we've been working with BPAC, the Parks and Rec Committee, staff and Planning Commission for nearly a year on this project, with the goal of creating a park that really meets the needs and desires of the community. And one of our, our aspects, one of the things we want to achieve, not just with the park, but with all of the public markets, is create a place that, that can truly be the gathering place for, for Emeryville. Place that people can come eat, shop, and really hang out with their friends. To that end, I just want to give you an update of what we've done so far. So the Public Market, the food hall, we've started the renovation of that, and that started about a week ago. And in that renovation, we're going to do a complete architectural design renovation of the interior improvements, meaning new finishes, new tables, new landscaping, we're adding food stalls. And during that construction, most of your favorites will still be open for business. And at the conclusion, we're going to invite in a number of other vendors that can offer a new variety and quality food. We're also working with a specialty grocer that we're trying to bring to the market, and they are very interested right now. And they're interested in the plan as we've laid it out, the tenant mix that we have, and the timing. Those are all critical issues to them. One thing, before I turn it over to architects, that I'd like to just mention is that I think there've been a few comments that may have been expressed to the council via your constituency, and I think there's a few perhaps inconsistencies that I'd like to just mention and clear up. One of them was, has to do with the size of the park. The park, as we've presented it, is actually slightly larger than the park that was approved in the PDP. Not smaller, but larger. And architects will explain the math and how that works out. Even visually, it may not appear that way, but it's actually slightly larger. The other issue is that we have been mindful of the future development that will occur to the south of our property, which is owned currently by the city. And so we've taken efforts to be able to connect and accommodate whatever development happens there, be it multifamily or an expansion of the park. We can accommodate that. And there was some, there was one other comment relative to perhaps redesigning the park to accommodate a multimodal transportation center. And we think that is best located on Christie or 64th, and the PDP actually had an accommodation for that on 64th. So with that, I'd like to turn our presentation over to Erin Ashley and Ann Howerton, our architect and landscape architect from Hard Howerton. Thank you.
Thanks. It's nice to see a couple of you again. We've, we've seen you at various committee meetings. And we've been around a lot over the last year and a half or so. Just to reorient you, if you haven't been on that side of town in a while, so Christie Park, of course, located on Christie Avenue, and the Essex Building, which is, of course, is an old photo from Google, is nearly complete. And the parking lot in between the two is where we're talking about expanding the park. To the south, of course, you know, are the parcels formerly part of the Redevelopment Agency that's now owned by the city. And they've come up frequently in our community meetings and discussions, so we've politely passed that to you. But between us and, between the existing park and the city parcels is an easement, which we're respecting, and we'll get into that in detail, but that serves Public Market with utilities. And so that's the concrete area there today. Oh. Oh, jeez. Just in terms of kind of recalling the PDP, and I'll just kind of acknowledge that the set of drawings you probably received in a packet was published to you before we received feedback at the latest rounds of committee meetings, whether it was the Parks and Rec Committee, and certainly before we received the arborist report from the city today. But we'll address those later in the presentation. I think we've, we've definitely got good solutions to work around that. But so today, you know, the Marketplace PDP is everything in red, and it included the city park, even though the city park was technically not owned by TMG at the time. The Essex Building, which is under construction, is obviously the first piece of a multi-phase project. Mark alluded to the upfix of the Public Market itself. Just thought we'd show a couple of quick images of what it'll look like. So a lot of the same tenants, he's promised me that the taqueria will still be there, and a lot of the other good ones. But a fresher look, a kind of more up-to-date look. It's been a while. Another view, a little bit more natural light, and definitely, you know, still the same services, just in a better environment. In a future phase, the idea is to take that alley, which stretches out to the north towards what used to be the movie theater, and really transform that in the base of the office building. And so this really factors into the park, because you start to think of the connectivity from all the folks who live in buildings near and around the Public Market to the Public Market. And this park and this alley play a big role in that, and so we see an interconnectivity between the two. The approved PDP, which is in the top drawing, and our proposed plan, which is in the lower drawing, and when the Essex Building was approved, and the road realignment, kind of dictated by that approval, it's in slightly a different location from where it was in 2008. The building got pulled back to, as a, as a way to appease the movie theater at the time. And that kind of threw the PDP into a little bit of a clarification quandary, which is to say, does the park want to be the exact same shape it was in 2008, or does it want to extend all the way north to the Essex Building? And after a number of meetings with Charlie and Maru and others at the city, it was collectively decided that extending the park north all the way to the Essex Building would create the park frontage along Christie and make it more of a continuity. Just as a point of comparison, so the approved PDP was about a 1.21-acre park, of which 6,000 square feet or so were retail, so the, sort of the effective park was about an acre, just over an acre. And the proposal we're making is about a 1.27-acre park, so slightly bigger than approved, and considerably bigger in terms of sort of useful area. Terms of connectivity, this has come up certainly. We, we think we're making the equivalent pedestrian and vehicular connections, and we've got traffic reports and a lot of other people that substantiate that. But certainly, the shapes are in slightly different places, and a lot of this comes back to that approval of the Essex Building at 64th and Christie. And this, you know, as an overlay, and this comes up in Planning Commission hearings all the time, is that the, the market realities of today versus 2007 and '08 are quite different. The, the Theater Site called for 100,000-square-foot, you know, quite effectively a big-box store, which, that just doesn't make a lot of sense today. So we're, we're working around that to create a, the gathering place that Mark talked about. So in terms of phasing, the first thing we want to do is get started on the, on the park, and we'd love to get started in construction even next year. Second quarter would be terrific. There's so many aspects to the project that, given how exciting it is to, to get going on projects these days, that there's overlapping Planning Commission hearings and study sessions, and so that's why we've been in front of study sessions seemingly every week. So on the heels of the park being completed would be potentially a mixed-use building on the Shellmount Site, and a residential building on parcel D, we're calling the Theater Site. And then at some point beyond that, hopefully not too far beyond that, the grocery store as part of a mixed-use block that Mark alluded to on parcel C, a plaza that really connects the park to the Marketplace, to the grocery store, and becomes a kind of a great pedestrian space at the heart of the property, and a new parking garage, which makes all this possible with retail on the ground floor. And we showed some of these graphics to the Planning Commission about a year ago and to community meetings since then, which talk about the character of Shellmount, once it's realigned and it has retail on both sides of the street. So it takes on more of a Main Street character, but it's very much focused on pedestrians and pedestrian crossings. Did you have a question, Commissioner? And here's another shot, sort of if you're standing in front of the grocery store, looking down Shellmount, so the existing office building on the right. So again, the idea is to create the walkable heart of Emeryville on Shellmount and around, in and around the park. In terms of process, we, in March, had a number of work sessions with staff to think through the footprint of the park and what seemed to be substantially conforming with the PDP. We had a, a great community meeting with a lot of good opinions. We saw the Planning Commission in July and had a lot of great feedback. Parks and Rec Committee actually gave us the sort of, the input that really became the plan, and Ann will talk about that a little bit more, but I think their feedback was incredibly critical to going from a blank slate to what we think is a pretty exciting plan. And then we've had meetings with BPAC, and now we're here with you. And the hope is that we'll go back with your feedback to the Planning Commission and continue to work through refinements. So again, just to kind of bring it back and reframe the park, the park today is 8.85 acres or so. The objective is to not quite double it, but add 50% or so to 1.27 acres or so. Terms of context, you know, here's generally the parks in Emeryville. 1.27 acres is effectively the size of Doyle Hollis. And the dimensions, you know, we're a little fatter at one end than Doyle Hollis, and a little thinner at the other end. We're a little shorter, but by virtue of the geometry, the acreage turns out to be just about the same. So if you're thinking about how big is this park, it's about that big. I'll turn it over now to Ann to kind of get into more of the aesthetics and the design.
Just stay there and do the tab.
Yes. But you have to talk into this.
It's nice to be in front of you, and I know some of you have seen these slides before. We'll try and be brief and to the point. You're looking at slides that are the park as we know it now, views in each direction, pointing out to you that all-important walkway from the PPP that people have been telling me over and over is, is critical and is being preserved in a slightly different iteration in the new proposed plan. The park stage, we heard a lot about that from community members, and then finally with the Parks and Rec Committee. Not so interested in using it these days. The fountain is defunct as we understand it, and given the weather situation in this park, the idea of large events is not as exciting to folks who plan to use this park as some interest now in dog parks these days and children's playground. So more detail on that coming up. This is how we started our process. What I want to explain is that we deliberately avoided drawing a plan until it absolutely became necessary. Instead, we listened. We listened, and we listened some more. We had wonderful input coming from the community at our first meeting, followed by the Parks and Rec Group, who were instrumental and really helping to crystallize a vision. We started with a mandate that we took very seriously, that Emeryville had a plan for their parks, published in 2011. And in fact, this park had a script. We presented the script to the community and said, "How do you feel about it?" They told us. We tried to take note, and we took that to the Parks and Rec Committee and said, "And how do you feel about it?" And that's where we started the refinement process without drawing a plan. So I'm showing you our process, so you understand how, here at our eighth public meeting, we finally feel that we do have a plan that's getting support, and we have been working to try and draw what we're hearing people want. So here's an important one that we provided, though. We thought it was essential that you understand that this park has a microclimate that's partly due to shadow and sun. It's diagrammatically sun all day currently in the south end of the park, but look at the next slide. The next slide, if the city land to the south is developed as a five- and six-story, five- or six-story building, will shrink the all-day sun to a very important central pocket, and we've got some great ideas we'll unveil to you about how that might be utilized. It is a consideration for the city as you think about this park, to understand that with another high-rise coming in, our wind tunnel kind of experience that's mostly contributed by the PPP may in fact be a little bit exacerbated, as well as less sunshine. That said, let me just trot you through our notes. Our notes for It is a consideration for the city as you think about this park, to understand that with another high-rise coming in, our wind tunnel kind of experience that's mostly contributed by the PPP may in fact be a little bit exacerbated, as well as less sunshine. That said, let me just trot you through our notes, our notes from meeting with these various groups. So this was our very first attempt to write down everything everybody said about what should happen, and this resulted from our second meeting with Parks and Rec. For example, they, the community wasn't sure of how active and passive they wanted to be. They were excited about the possibilities, but holding back. Parks and Rec were more definite. They said blend it, let the north and south ends of the park embrace some active uses and some passive uses, and while you're at it, we think we need a real distinct dog park facility. It can be small. It should be fenced, and keep it away from the kids. And by the way, we think the kids probably need a little more of a distinct playground with some play equipment in a play area. And you might locate that closer to the future public housing. Everybody, the whole way along, has said, keep that important connection from the plaza across to the PPP, more or less in its, where it is currently, but maybe let it do a little something, and let's allow that to be a very important lighted pathway. Lighting was said over and over to us. I think those are the key elements. I want to bring up trees now and as we move through our slides. It has always been a consideration, what could we save? And we were asked to do so. And in fact, the idea of trying to save the Southern Magnolias, which at this point in our conversation were considered some of the better trees on the site, was something that we actually considered and discussed. As I pointed out, their location and proximity to each other creates a screen at the north edge of the current park. And as such, it bisects the park into two parks. And in looking at how to save them, the idea of, you know, removing every other one or doing something like that was considered. However, we have a very excellent arborist with whom we are consulting on the issue of trees for this park, and her measured consideration was, Southern Magnolias do not transplant well. They tend to defoliate. They look sickly for several years before they will even recover and relief. And she said, you know, given all of that, you could purchase a new Southern Magnolia and have a healthy tree. So we have not proposed doing so. We think it's very important that the two edges of the park combine, and a little more on that when we get to that topic. Here's a preliminary design concept. This is the first time we actually drew the shapes of things and moved them into position and gave them a little bit of scalability, because we thought we'd heard from the various groups what they were looking for, and we thought it was time to test it out. So this is the plan that you've probably had a chance to look at. Again, very important idea to create the connection, the lighted connection, that ties into the plaza and creates connectivity for the community. The dog park has taken shape. It's now in improved shape. A few little details, which you'll see in the future slides to give it life. The playground has taken shape. We're connecting it to the plaza space. We're putting it in the patch of sun where we think people, it will have morning sun, and then the main plaza will have all-day sun. Seemed like an important idea to us. Let's go to the next one. So now, these are the blowups. These are the enlargements to allow you just get a sense of what we have in mind. So this is the main plaza at the east side, connecting to the plaza and alley and up to the market, and future market space at parcel C potentially. And the idea is to do some art sculpture in the main space at C, to build in some seating and to create a child-designated play space adjacent to it in the areas that are looking white. And you can see a number of things are suggested in there. The next slide will give you an idea of what that's all about. Oh, I guess we took those out.
No, it says after this.
Okay, I guess we're gonna have to go back to it. Do you want to go forward?
Yes.
Okay. This is the playground idea. It's a series of ideas that are imaginative, allowing free play, exercise. The whale shape at the front is actually the thing that's suggested in plan. Some very imaginative designers in Europe, in Northern Europe, are the designers of that, and they are consultants we might use. It's an interesting set of ideas that allows activity, and it's adjacent to a discovery kind of walkway system that circuits the south end of the park. And we have some playful mounds that we've retained with, you know, that have been supported as an idea that appeals to all ages. And there's a slide showing that. So the idea that there's this discovery walkway that can be used for exercise or younger kids' discovery or using their three-wheeler, and there's a tot and presumably a dad on a berm playing with it. So that's the area B that you see on the plan. Now we cover another topic, which was flexible use. Everybody said, don't put too much program in this park. We think we need the space for whatever people imagine they want to do. So we've conceived it as lawn areas, surrounded by a very gentle berm strategy, and with a cadence of trees of a limited palette that would allow yoga, quiet areas to contemplate, such as the gentleman in the upper right. That was a favorite slide of many individuals. And a main pathway that not only works for circulation, but which constitutes a social gathering place. So it's a very wide sort of curving meander where neighbors and friends can hang out on park benches, and it has a nice ability to engage with people coming and going. This is the idea for the dog park. It's based on looking at a number of smaller urban dog parks, the one Madison Park is shown in the upper right corner. Large and small dogs, the idea is that you are responsible for your dog, no less than being responsible for a small child. And so it's well-supervised. It's of a scale where they're not running free. There is kind of a nice wash station idea and a water basin idea for fun, and those are circular benches proposed under the two large shade trees within the dog park itself.
Go back to entrances.
Okay. And let's not skip entrances. So part of our analysis was to understand the coming and going from all the corners and through the middle, and how important the edges would be and the access would be. And so at the Christie Avenue entrance, we're proposing a trellis, such as the character trellis image at the right, upper right. And the kind of width that's demonstrated in the image at the lower right, so that you understand this is main pathway, sense of entering, important wayfinding signage, as well as other kinds of park rules and rules regarding dogs and those wonderful little baggy dispensers. All those things could be located here, not to mention bike parking. So we now, with new input from the pedestrian and bike committee, are going to look at picking up some bike parking within the park, and it's also strategically placed at the major entrances. This is another fun idea for the little entrance that's up at 63rd Street. Again, it's unabashedly based on Rittenhouse Square, one of my favorite parks in America, and it has a small, Rittenhouse has a similar idea, which is the slide that you're seeing on the right, upper and lower right, where there's a small sculpture, and it's designed to attract young families, and in fact, they congregate there. This is the corner opposite the coffee shop. It's adjacent to new apartment buildings going in in a contemplation that there may be young families. It's kind of a nice idea that appeals to everybody. Okay, hardscape materials. The diagram speaks for itself. The circulation is mostly concrete, decomposed granite at the dog park, accent paving, an idea that we should celebrate the main pathway system and link it up with the proposed materials at the Plaza Street. And then the playground itself has a proposed rubber surfacing. I've interviewed all my 30-something, my oldest child's friends with youngsters, and they, you know, in my day, it was redwood bark and sand. These days, the urban choice is something that's really safe for your kid, and you can see what's hiding, you know? It's in plain sight, and it's washable and clean. And some of them are very bouncy now and quite attractive, so we'll explore that possibility. These are examples of those materials. This is the tree idea that we have proposed, and let me start by saying we're not using redwood ash, counter to the, there was an error in the report, arborist report. Those are already approved at the Essex project on the north across the street, and those are the brown circles. What we are proposing is a street tree, is the Trystania Conferda. It's a good urban tolerant tree that we think, based on Nelda Matheny, our arborist review, will do well in the conditions that we expect of the sidewalk. We are proposing Queensland Petosprum as a suitable shade tree for the main pathway and accenting the dog park area and the southern border. The smaller tree is the Elegant Water Gum. It can be a multi-brancher. It can create kind of a little bit of a screening and definition to the park edge on those mounds that I mentioned. And then we are retaining a Southern Magnolia that's closest to the Christie Avenue entrance. To do so, we will have to study the grading situation, figure out how to put it in a ground cover at grade, while we have to look at capping the rest of the park in order to deal with the toxic soil condition, as well as to improve our drainage situation. We know that we have a high water table. It's possibly brackish. We're doing some tests, we're making arrangements to do some testing so that we'll have better information, and based on that information, we hope to be able to make the final determinations of the planting palette. This is the diagram with the tree removal plan that we have proposed. Many of the trees are on the existing berm, the large berm behind the stage. I want to say again, as a matter of history and fact-finding, that we made our inquiry with the Parks and Rec Committee and said, how do you feel about this berm? And they felt that it doesn't do any good in terms of wind shelter. It does in fact lend itself to some problem elements late at night, because it's not easily observed by patrol cars, and in fact, they suggested that it be removed. And in fact, their comments were specifically about looking at the Magnolias. Could they be transplanted? Could any of them be saved? And that they were interested in having a non-bisected park. They wanted to have the open flow and the flexible use plan. So that is what we have largely considered, although we certainly threw the question to our arborist.
And then today's arborist report reinforced what we'd heard in our September meeting from the Parks and Rec Committee, which was that trees 15 through 19 there along the berm are pretty good. And so we actually drove over there on the way here tonight and to just reaffirm that. And yeah, I think four of the six are pretty good.
Four of the six are good.
So what we're trying to get smarter on is how toxic is the soil, and what can we do to make sure that those trees will stay and stay healthy, and kids or other folks won't be exposed to things you don't want them exposed to? So that's the next step, and I think just to reiterate for the layman like me, the high-water table means that as near as two feet below the ground, there could be brackish, you know, salty water, which just makes tree growing hard to do here, which is why so many of the trees look the way they do.
Let me just reiterate also that we've just gotten the report. I think this is preliminary on both sides, and without more information, we're gonna try and be helpful here. And because those are stronger London plane trees, and they're at the edge on a berm, depending on the rules about the soils and the findings about the soils, we will take a hard look at saving them. And this is the landscape on the ground plane. So if, I'll just spend a minute to say that the bright green areas in the center are lawn areas. That's the high-traffic, lots of usage play areas and congregating areas and so forth. On the edges, Area E, that is intended to be native grasses, grasses that actually take use and can be mown. And I haven't developed the detailed design, but the idea is to try and get as much of this park to be usable as possible. So while it might have a gentle mounding situation that which will support better rooting and drainage for the trees that we're proposing, it would be gentle enough that you can walk up and over it, sit on it, and use it for picnicking, play, and that sort of thing. These are examples of proposed materials, just to give you a flavor. It's designed to be, to take the wind, to look casual and low-maintenance, and yet present a few pops of color, such as the vine that would be proposed for the dog fence and for the trellis. Here's some more pictures. As you can see, it's a lot of native grasses. I wish I could respond that I think there's a suitable native tree. At this point, I don't know of one, and I have been asking. This is the site amenity diagram. It shows you at a glance that we've got lots of park benches and seating opportunities. I'll characterize that the purple shape that looks like a squiggle is actually an idea for a concert seat into an edge of the berm. And that area is kind of an eddy. It's thought of as that respite location. The brown curves that are situated around the main plaza space are again benches with backs that are designed so you can hang out in that space. This is a look at our site furnishings, just as a palette. We're thinking about using pole lights of a campus scale so that lighting is overhead for safety, and those would be along the main walkway. We're looking at this type of bench idea, and I think at the lower right, it's self-explanatory. Those are the dog details. The curved seat in the middle, lower band is our idea for trying to work with the berm and create that into an opportunity for more seating.
Can I interject briefly? Have you looked at our city's street furniture that we've already, we have throughout the town to incorporate it into the park?
We have, as well as the Shell Mound Design Guidelines. And I think we're trying to balance between the sort of the city standard and the kind of public market overlay area, which takes into Shell Mound. And so I think we've got a foot and two camps right now, and we may be not firm enough in either yet, so we love your opinions.
Great, thanks.
That's generally our presentation. We can take questions, we can go back to the site plan. Yes.
Can I ask, could you go to slide 42 again?
I have a question about the...
Go the other way, actually.
The other way. Great, thanks. So the curved bench with the backs, can you, I'm assuming that they're oriented toward the, not toward the whale? Are those benches facing toward the whale or not for people to sit and observe their kids?
They're facing toward the plaza. We'll use the hand tool. Is that making it clearer?
Okay. Right. So I think that you probably need more seating oriented toward that area where the whale is and where the climbing structure is, because I think it would give a lot of use. And it's difficult to be across the path, right, as well? So I would say if you could add some seating closer into that area, I think that would be an improvement.
Yeah, one of the interesting topics I think about as a young dad is, should this be a fenced play area? Like, a lot of city kids' areas are fenced, and they say, you know, no one in allowed without a kid. And candidly, none of the committees landed on yay or nay, so I think we'd love your input on that, too.
I wouldn't be for a fence.
No.
No, I like it open as well.
Yeah. But just more seating.
Great.
I think that's a great comment.
Anyone else?
I have a couple clarifying questions before we hear from the public, hopefully, and then more comments afterwards, of course. My question's about the tree palette selection and what the height of those trees are expected to be, the range of heights. Rather than a whole bunch of small trees, I'm hoping that some of these varieties might actually, at maturity, which if we allow trees to get to maturity, or if they have the soil conditions so that they can grow mature, I'm just asking for numbers or ranges.
You know, I wish I could have reached my arborist this afternoon, but I couldn't. What makes me nervous is there's no such thing as, you know, there's published ranges, but of cour, and then there's experience in direct site conditions. I'm concerned that because of the difficult site, we may not see normal, really large-scale development, because when I look around, I can see the variability block by block in Emeryville. So I'm hesitant to tell you how big a tree we can expect, given the water table. But I will say this, these are trees that were picked with the arborist based on the water table, and even based on the brackish information, which we don't know how many parts per million we've got in terms of salt. I feel fairly comfortable, having looked at... I feel fairly comfortable, having looked at Brisbane Box, growing a block from the Embarcadero in San Francisco, and that's that building in that photo, that that is a good urban street tree that grows in confined conditions within a block of the bay and is achieving a three-story height. So I can tell you that our idea was that the edge would have a strong scale to it. Within the body, and then I'm going to say, by contrast, the park tree, the elegant water gum, is typically a smaller tree. It's 20 to 25. And it was going to be used on the berms, not to close things off, but to give a little more definition in the layer of the berm perimeter of the park. And then after that, the Queensland pittosporum is a medium-scale tree. It's going to achieve 30 feet or so. And all of these are, and I quickly looked at the age and longevity of the trees, you know, the publications are all over the place, and I haven't spoken with my arborist, so I really think I should stay silent on that. It's certainly over 40 to 50 years, but...
One else, or should we? Go ahead. Did you want to finish something up?
I was just going to say that the park tree, the peppermint tree, is something I picked with the arborist because the little leaves, it has a willow character, although in smaller scale. And that gets about 25 feet, again, 25 to 30.
Okay. Thank you. Should we go ahead and hear from the public this time?
Yes.
Okay. Any members of the public who would like to speak?
Hi.
My name is John Jackson. My wife and I are residents of Emeryville. We live in Pacific Park Plaza. We've been here for over 30 years. And we're concerned about unbalanced development along Christie Avenue. The current plan for the expansion, design of Christie Park, is much better than it was even a couple of years ago. And I give credit to the current developers and to the various, to the council and the different commissions that have been working on that. But it's still way too small to accomplish what the architects and planners want it to accomplish. And I think that's clear from what was just stated, that they don't want it overdeveloped or oversubscribed for the functions. And at the last planning session dealing with this, Commissioner Gunkel pointed out that his visit to Doyle Hollis revealed that the park was chaotic. And I was there at that meeting, and it's chaotic because it was supposed to be eight acres. That was how, that's how it's described in the general plan, but the city couldn't get the land. So it is chaotic because there's, it's trying to do too many things. The same thing's going to happen here. You're trying, and Doyle Hollis is larger than the, a report I have here that was published by an Alameda County agency a few months after it was built, shows it was developed on a one-and-a-half acre site, and that doesn't include the play area, which is really not part of the park, which is across the street from it. So if Doyle Hollis is already chaotic, and you're going to try to do more with this park than that one, it's going to be way over, you know, you're trying to accomplish too much. The other issue here, and I'm digressing from what I wrote here, because I don't have time, I think that the city council is no longer the decision maker. It's going to be the planning commission. I didn't know that until tonight. But I think they should defer their decision until they get the report from the city attorney or from the planning department about the use of those lands, the legal issues regarding the use of those properties that are south of the existing park. I don't think the decision on that park should be made until that information is available. And I don't understand why it's taken so long to get that decision. It is a complicated issue, but it should have been, it's been the same question now for three years. And the city deserves an answer to that question about the redevelopment agency issues. It hasn't been forthcoming, and it should be. So that's one point. And the other, I'd like to see the landscape architects charged with incorporating, at least in rudimentary form, those properties that are south in a plan so the city can see what that might look like, and so it won't be so crowded.
Thank you. Your time's up. Thank you. Anyone else to speak?
We received at the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee this presentation yesterday. And I've thought about it since then. And I guess what I would like to see is some real wind studies for this. They had excellent lighting analysis, but just to, since wind is such a major component of the actual experience of being in the park, if there could be some measurements, that would be helpful. And measurements even at the city property to the south of the park. And it just would be really useful to have that. And there's predominant winds, of course, from the northwest, and then during storm season from the southwest. But if we could just have just a few predominant studies of what the variable wind speeds and directions are, I think it would be really helpful in making a decision really about even, you could, you might even find that the southern portion is better for wind. When I looked at it on Google Maps, it just looked like it might have a lot less wind, and you might want to swap out the housing that you thought about on the south side for the north side. And I know this just seems kind of cavalier, but if we had the wind studies, we could really look at it more specifically. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard?
Okay, I'd like to, first of all, see if I can find out, maybe somebody can tell me after I speak. The presenter made reference to the so-called, what he's calling the Main Street in the PUD, which is what we call Shell Mound, about the retail and the residential development that's planned for that street. The first iteration of this development had the sidewalks on Shell Mound as privately owned, owned by the developer. I made some, I complained. I thought we should have actual public sidewalks. I thought, yes, it was, first iteration was privately owned. The public would be allowed to use the sidewalks, but you, it's private, and you could be kicked out for a host of different reasons, just like similar to Bay Street, actually exactly like Bay Street, is what the first iteration was. I complained, and then I was told by, I believe it was Charlie, I think, told me that the, now the sidewalks on Shell Mound in this PUD are going to actually be real public sidewalks, I mean, old-fashioned, actual sidewalks. So I want to first off make sure that that's still the case. Hopefully, the privatization of the sidewalks hasn't crept back in. And then, since that, if somebody could talk to me about that, or talk to us about that after I sit down. And then I also wanted to talk about the children's playground at this proposed park. There seems to be a lot of space devoted to children, but Emeryville, as everybody knows, there aren't children here. We have the least children per capita of any city in the East Bay. We don't have children here. And the reason why we don't is because we're not building family-friendly housing. We haven't done for some 20-odd some years. And I don't see a paradigm moving forward where we would start doing that, barring perhaps a new city council. Could happen, I suppose, in that regard. So is that what you're thinking? I want to know. Are you thinking, well, there's going to be a new dynamic on the council, and then we actually will start getting families moving to Emeryville? We will start building suitable places for families to live? And if that's the thinking, it's, I sort of admire your optimism, because everybody in this town says they love families, and they want, they love children, and we want more children, we want more families, and yet we're just not doing it. So I'm reading here that maybe you guys, the five of you, are thinking that there's going to be a change up here, and we actually are going to start doing that. I hope you're right. But it does seem to be putting a lot of...
Your time is up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Anyone else to be heard? No? Okay. Comments, questions from councils?
Yeah. I have a few comments. First, I want to thank the Parks and Rec Committee and the BPAC Committee, because I think they really gave a lot of substantive comments that have informed this plan, that made it the good plan that it is. And also the community meeting, which was over at the Hyatt. We had a really good turnout there. What, there were about 40, 50 people there, Charlie? So you really have come into a community and listened to the community. That being said, I do have a few remarks on the plan itself. The first one I'm very conscious of is whether or not you've had any input from the Public Works Department about what this plan would require in ongoing city maintenance. That's very important in a small city where we look closely at our ongoing expenses. So I don't know whether that has taken place, but I would hope that there would be that discussion so that the council, even though they're not deciding on this plan, gets an idea of what additional maintenance is going to be required here. The other thing is, I hope there is further discussion, and I think Jennifer brought it up, about we already have a palette of street furniture. This is a city park. It's not a private park. So I'm concerned that we spend a lot of money on different street furniture when we already have a palette. We already have light standards that we're very, very proud of, the green light standards. So let's, I would hope the planning commission would go back and take a look at that, because I think that's important. I want to say that your plans for the child center, the recreation center, is absolutely outstanding. I especially like the artistic features that you have there. And I was in Bay Street over the weekend and was watching that plaza they had with the bouncy service, surface, and it was amazing, and not only the number of children that were there, but how well they used that surface without a lot of the fancy plastic play deals. So you're, from my mind, you're moving in the right direction on this. On the dog park, I just have a question that I would like you to refer back to some dog people. Is that water feature going to be conducive to disease among dogs? You kind of have to take a look at that. The washing station is one thing, but a water feature where dogs are in and splashing around. Up at the dog park in Albany, of course, they use the bay, so they've got plenty of water, and who knows what the toxins are. But the other thing, and I want to refer back here to what Scott has said about the wind studies. I think if we can incorporate that to take a look, it's important to know that, but on the other hand, I reflect on the usage at the Watergate Marina, and the wind there is pretty heavy. And yet the usage there, you know, people choose to go where they go for lots of different reasons, and we've got a bunch of sturdy people here when it comes to wind. That being said, I want to address the issues that John Jackson has brought up. I don't think we should delay, in any sense of the word, with moving forward with this plan. But I would like to encourage my fellow council members to take a look at that city-owned property that's right to the south of this park, and consider the overall shot we had of the density that is going to be in that corridor. And clearly, this park is not big enough. We have got to move south. And I would like to propose, and this is really not on point here, sorry, guys, but I would like to propose that we come back in December and have a meeting and set up a strategy for how can we not only acquire that parcel, which I understand was purchased with redevelopment money for housing, but I also understand that it would be legal to trade the other city properties. So it's a possibility. We are never going to have an opportunity like this again, by the encyclopedia guys. But I think, let's move ahead with this park, get it in place. People will enjoy it, and let's really get our strategy going about expanding that park to the south. This will be kind of like the Central Park of the West Side. So I, see if I have anything else. And I just want to make sure that the design of this southern edge is such that if the future council moves ahead on expanding this park, that there's not going to be extensive retrofit having to take place, that it's going to be a melding of a larger park. But that's all I have.
Yeah, I agree with you as far as, I think it needs to go south. But I also, you know, the city seems to do a really bad job when it comes to the trees. So I'd be very interested in coming back and having a full understanding of what's going to happen to the trees that we plant there. And I was also thinking with the drought right now, I mean, I have some trees that are suffering from the drought, and it looks to me like you have a lot of trees. And so I'd be very interested to know how much water is going to take. And it sounds like the trees that you selected are drought tolerant, because I hear Australia a lot in the selections. But I think it's really important that we plant the right type of trees, and we don't, if we don't know exactly if it's the right type of tree, not to plant a tree. So as I said, I, you know, we all love trees, but the city has done it wrong so many times. And I was also going to say, you know, if the transfer tax passes, the city's going to have all this additional revenue, so that moving south is not going to be a problem, right?
Well, if I could say, Kurt, if we don't pass the transfer tax in the general, the city, we will not have the ability to move forward on capital projects like this. But getting back to your trees, you just reminded me of...
That's not a campaign statement. It was not.
Not coming from me, it's not.
It's an economic statement. It's the facts. Getting back to trees, 100 years ago, right where the Bay Bridge touches down, was a big grove of, what do they call, saltwater trees, willows. They had a big willow grove there. Are willows not something that we do? But they survive in brackish water, obviously. So that's just a thought.
And the one thing is, the park will be cold and windy, no matter what, because we've tried to have events up there, and it's a cold and windy part of it.
Hey, have you ever been to a wedding at the Emeryville Marina? Sorry, just lost my hand.
Jennifer?
Sure. Want to go? I have a couple questions that I'd like answered from staff, or perhaps from the applicants. I'm not sure which. One is about bay-friendly landscaping and stormwater treatment on this. I haven't heard about that yet. There's reference to it, and there's also reference to the two feet of fill and toxicity. And I didn't get a very good sense of that, if there's more information about that, too.
With our city ordinance, this park would have to comply with bay-friendly landscaping requirements. So that will be a checklist that we'll go through and make sure that it complies. The other item you asked for?
Stormwater.
Stormwater requirements. We haven't really looked at the details of that yet, but given the condition and nature of the soil in that site, it's going to be questionable whether or not we can do as much as we normally would do, because the groundwater is not in the best condition in that site, and we wouldn't want that groundwater getting up and into our stormwater treatment areas. So we have to look into that further.
I just know Doyle Hollis, you know, was really, it was an example for the region, actually, in stormwater treatment and also the bay-friendly landscaping. And there's educational signage all around, and I would love to see the city continue that where possible.
Right.
And incorporating that into the design as well, if possible. Great. And I want to applaud the comments from the public, not someone who's here this evening, but who wrote to us also about the transit planning. When we look back at the original preliminary development plan for this site, it shows car share pods, it shows bike sharing, it shows transit accessibility. And I know we're only looking at one piece of this development plan, but unfortunately, that's the nature of these larger developments, is that you look at one piece, and you look at another piece, and you look at another piece, and then all of a sudden, it's all done, and where did you put the transit, or where'd you put the car share, and all of that? And so I don't feel like I'm getting enough information about that to weigh in on it right now, but, boy, we'd be remiss to leave it behind. And I heard you say that 64th and Christie are where that focus would be, but what does that look like? And how is that being implemented? that look like, and how is that being implemented so that we don't lose sight of it and in the end, end up with a project that's not, oh, sorry, we can't put it there because we just didn't accommodate it. So, I'd like to see that clearly articulated, and I don't know if we'll hear that tonight or in the future. The trees, I really appreciate staff, and committees, and applicants talking about this. I feel like we've come a long way, actually. I'm sorry, I'm kind of known as the grumpy tree lady on the council, I think, but I really appreciate having the second opinion of our city arborist today. I'm sorry they couldn't be here tonight to answer questions, but I look forward to seeing how you can accommodate and retain as many trees as possible. I know you talked about a concern of cutting the park in half, but actually, the park already has a line of trees, new trees, to be planted, and maybe they're in a slightly different location, but I would like to see as many existing trees retained as possible. There's nothing that you can put in the place of time for trees. And in Emeryville, what we tend to do, at least in my five years on the council, is, you know, plan to take out trees, to put in better trees that will be much better than the trees that we have, and we're not going to get to maturity with that behavior again and again. I'm actually surprised how many trees you're recommending for this, and I would suggest fewer trees, but possibly larger trees, similar to what Councilmember Brinkman said. You know, let's do a few trees right, think about the water and other maintenance issues as well, but perhaps not as many, especially in terms of the height, and I know that that was the question I was getting at earlier, to have a variety that way. I also really appreciate our arborists, since I don't know, I know Midwestern trees better than I know California trees still, it seems, but the varieties they had issues with and had some other suggestions, and I would like you to look at those carefully and have that They also mentioned including a maintenance pruning plan, which I think is very wise, comes back to the cost, and how do we make sure that the trees, you know, what's the height of the branches that we're looking for going forward. How many trees are on your plan? Do you happen to know? I counted somewhere around seventy, but I'm not sure.
Do you have?
You're not sure? Okay. I did a quick estimate, but, you know, currently, it's fifty-six. I think your goal shouldn't necessarily be to have more trees, but better balanced and better placement. We answered the bay-friendly. And the street furniture, I also agree with Nora that matching the street furniture for our city is really important. We're trying to have a continuity. And can someone answer the toxicity and the capping of the soil in two feet of fill? Who can respond to that question?
We've been working with the regional area to determine how to deal with the toxic soil, and one of the suggestions has been, is that you have to have a cap over the toxic soil, and we haven't done the soils bores yet, but it looks like we might, they're suggesting a two-foot cap of clean soil between the landscaping we're going to put in and the toxic soil to create a barrier for the public. So, that's not finalized yet, we have to get the soils test, but that's what's recommended so far.
So, do we know that it is toxic?
We don't know for sure, but if it's like the rest of the site, it most likely is.
Okay. And that means removing two feet of soil, or just putting on top, is what you're saying, with the cap?
It's going to be a combination of both, because we have berms and undulating, so there'll be some removal, there'll be some adding of a cap, but we want to keep it so you can approach it at the sidewalk at grade. We don't want to do way with those high mounds around the perimeter, because it just encloses the park, and you can't see into it, and it becomes a safety issue.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So, yeah, I know it was given as one of the reasons why we have to remove all the trees, but I'm hoping there's some happy medium, again, that we can find between the cap and obviously making it safe for the public. I like the children's play area being open, and despite the fact that we have not built family-friendly housing in the past in Emeryville, I happen to know that the public market is a children's magnet, and I hope that whatever changes you're making in the public market will continue to attract all of the East Bay three-year-olds. I don't know if the ball pit's going to remain, but it's certainly extremely popular. So, I think there will be children playing in this park, and I think that actually, we can attract more people. It's a little bit chicken and egg, but maybe we'll get some more family-friendly housing if we have a really nice place where children are playing. That's up to future council, I suppose. And I love that Nora and Kurt both said, let's expand south. I think that is so refreshing and exciting, and, again, I probably won't be around for that decision, but I really hope that the city takes a vision here, and we've had, we have a huge park at Doyle Hollis that's planned, and it hasn't moved forward. I hope it will at some point, but it's harder to take away buildings and put in a new park than it is to take what's called, what do you fondly call this pit? The pit?
Pit.
The eyesore?
The foundation.
Yeah, the foundation that's been basically left there, and to make something really...
Emeryville's Stonehenge.
Our Stonehenge, our kind of depression Stonehenge. So, to make something really wonderful, and I don't want to lose the sight of affordable housing near here, that's a future decision also, and family-friendly, of course, but let's take the opportunity, if we have it, to, and see how that works out financially and legally and everything else. I think... Oh, my last comment, I guess, good thing I took notes. I've heard from few people who use this park much more than I do, that having straight path and direct access across from the PPP crosswalk to the plaza at the top of this picture is really important, and I appreciate that there is access. It's slightly meandering, and I think that's lovely aesthetically, but we have lots of great meanderings around the park, and if that path could be more functional, I guess, and get you where you're going quickly, I would support that as well. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Great. Okay. I had a chance to weigh in at committee a couple of times, quite a bit about this park, but let me just say that we, I'm glad to hear that people are okay with removing the berms, because there's some trees on those berms, but they're not really serving a park function, and that was one thing that we just wanted to make explicit at the committee level, and then tonight, and as we move forward. It just seemed like there was greater value for park uses if we removed the berms. Unfortunately, because some of the trees are on the berms, that means they're living in better soil, and so, that's why they're more robust than some other trees. So, I just want, in the, you know, full discussion about the tree situation, it's, that's just a factor to consider. And when we discussed a committee about maybe having an alternative site for public movie screenings and stuff like that, we kind of nixed that because of the wind. It's not really a very good location, but lawn spaces are tremendously used. People put up movable nets to play different kinds of net games. I've seen volleyball, I've seen variations on soccer and frisbee and all that kind of stuff. So, it's clear, given that we don't have, we don't have enough lawn, so it seems like, I'm really glad to see that there's going to be another space here where people can throw things, kick things, and run around. In terms of the discussion about the tree choices and also the plant choices, which we didn't drill down to tonight so much, Kurt, you noticed, the proposal is to have a lot of trees from Australia, because that's a dry area and very similar climatically, but at committee, I asked, well, why don't we use California native trees? And maybe they don't have as pretty a canopy, and cypresses look more wind-blown, but they're going to be wind-blown there anyway, or whatever, but, so, I don't really, tonight's not the time to talk about the plant choices or the tree choices, except to say that I think those are still outstanding items, and that whatever preparation is done to the soil, you know, we need to learn that, we need to learn how to plant, prepare soils so that things can grow in them, because along Shellmount, many of you may remember, we planted a lot of trees, and they all died, so presumably because of the soil conditions underneath that. So, we need to invest in our public spaces in a little healthier way so that they survive. I'm really glad to hear the comments tonight, too, about the stretch of people living between I-80 and the train tracks is growing, and it's only going to continue to grow, and this is the only neighborhood park. So, that middle section, that strip of the city, doesn't have a park, this is going to be it. So, I don't know what we can do around the redevelopment, post-successor agency commitments and all this kind of stuff, but this is the chance to have that whole area between the train tracks and I-80 have a decent park. I mean, Sherwin-Williams is another opportunity, but not for this part of the city. So, I think the more we can expand on that, the better. I do wish, apropos of your comment about the walkway being straighter, I actually wish the road to the east, along the eastern edge of the park were straighter. I don't see any value in having it jog that way, except to be able to create a bigger building further east to it. And to me, that's unfortunate. I'd rather have a more rectangular-shaped park and a straighter road, but those are my comments.
Thank you, Ruth. I don't have a lot of new comments to make, except to say that I co-sign onto a lot of this. I think better, fewer trees should be a goal. I think that the direct path also, running through the center of the park, is a good idea, to connect it with the rest of the development. I really like the dog park and the benches around the trees. I think that will get a lot of traffic. And the family-friendly kind of features over on this end, I'm just so glad to see something besides the kind of plastic Lego-looking assembly of play structures that we just see way too much of. To have something distinctive and imaginative for a children's space is wonderful, and also to have a piece of art, some sculpture that children can interact with on the other side of the park is a really wonderful idea. And I hear loud and clear about, you know, folks needing and wanting more green space in this area. And thank you, everyone, for your comments this evening, and anything else?
Mayor Asher?
Yes.
Could I just respond to a couple of things?
Yes, of course, Charlie.
I just want to note, I don't think Mira said this in her staff presentation, but the staff-level development coordinating committee has reviewed this park plan at least twice. So, that includes, of course, planning, building, economic development, public works, fire, police, city manager, city attorney, community services. So, we've all taken a look at it. So, in terms of the issues related to public works and so forth, that's definitely on our radar screens. Specifically, the DCC commented that the park should use the standard city street furniture palette, and with the standard city lumex streetlights on the streets around the park, and the greenway lights within the park. So, we're planning to go that direction.
Great, thank you.
I want to also just mention that we do already have scheduled a study session for you at your January meeting on the Christie Avenue properties, land assemblage, and so, we will definitely factor in expansion of this park as an option to consider in that study session. And concerning transit, it hasn't been a major factor in this particular portion of the Marketplace PUD, but it's been a very major consideration for the projects on Shellmount Street. There are bus stops that are integrated into those designs that are adjacent to the pedestrian bridge over the railroad tracks to kind of serve as the western side of the city's transit center. And also, the general plan calls for Shellmount, Christie, and I believe also 65th Street to function as transit streets. So, those will all be taken into consideration in the build-out of the Marketplace PUD. Transit has definitely not been forgotten.
Thank you, Charlie.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just address some of the issues about the parcels to the south?
Yes.
So, the parcel immediately to the south, adjacent of the existing park, is owned by the city as the housing successor. And so, that parcel was acquired with low and moderate income housing funds, and so it does have, to the extent anything was, or the city went forward and developed on there, there would have to be affordable housing on that parcel. That does not preclude swapping that property for other like property, or even selling it. And then, the parcels to the south, there are two parcels that are being occupied temporarily by the Public Works Department, those are owned by the city, and those are not constrained by any sort of use limitations on it. So, clearly, you could swap similar-sized property and, you know, sort of have the parcels adjacent to the existing park, you know, so you can expand it and have your housing further down the block, or as I say, you could even buy that parcel and put the whole block into a park. So, it's really at the discretion of the council as to how they want to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Biddle. Yeah. Okay. All right, with that, this meeting's adjourned. All right, we're now on the blue agenda for this evening. This is the City Council of the City of Emeryville, a successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. We're all still here. I'll let chambers clear for a second. Okay, if you could go ahead and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Make a motion.
Public comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Nora. Public comments for any items on the agenda? I'm sorry, Sharon.
Do you want to just give them all to the clerk, and she will pass them along?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, maybe you can guess why I'm here this evening, I'm not sure, but I wanted to invite everyone to the opening of the 28th Annual Emeryville Art Exhibition, which will open this Friday.
Yay.
Yay.
Got a place?
Yes, but I, and actually, I do want to thank, I wanted to thank Charlie Bryant, and Sarah Billing, and Amber Evans, and Mike Biddle, for their suggestions and efforts in helping us to find a space, which came in the very, 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 very end of what our window was to, as a drop-dead time. And so, I thank you to Rich Robbins and Wareham Development for their donation of the space. So, we hope to see the community Friday evening, and the address is 6121 Hollis Street, Heritage Square. So, that's the main entrance to that building, and it's just to the west of Bucci's Restaurant. We have 115 artists, we have an increase of forty percent in the number of artists who are participating this year that were juried into the show, and actually, we even have a special fundraiser on opening night, which is a fun iPhone portrait that one of the artists is donating as his contribution to the show. So, it's a beautiful show, I mean, it really is, it's, there's so much wonderful work, and we hope to see people on Friday, and hope then that people come back over the course of the next month for, to revisit the artwork, and for poetry, and for dance performance. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Anyone else? Public comments?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Where? Yeah.
There's more public comments?
There's more public comments.
More public comments?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry I came later, and I would have made a comment when the situation of the park was open. And I really like to be authorized to make a comment now, if it's possible. Okay, so the way I see the park is, to me, of course, I'm not much into the recreation end with neither point of my life. So the park is another fun and entertainment and something that is going to be for the beauty of the city and all that. But I have a side that is biased, in which I do not make anything that does not call for efficiency. I'm talking about energy efficiency. And this park, for the land it occupies, I don't see. It does not have any wind generator, windmill generator. It does not have also any space to collect solar energy. And if we talk about water to feed the tree, and water that has not been polluted, then we could have many disinulation plans to feed the roots of the tree. And that could cost nothing with the wind generator and the solar energy. And we could also have, this could be educational. In other words, we could have a set of machines, instead of people pumping iron, they would make, generate electricity and be paid one cent a kilowatt, and all that to make muscle or just paint energy. So I could see the park being, I don't want to say waste, because, you know, I don't want to offend anybody, but me, I would make the park a workstation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move the consent calendar.
I think we have one more public comment.
I just wanted to alert everybody here, people watching on television. There is a very dark force. Forces of darkness are descending on our town, and it's coming in the form of the National Association of Realtors, California Association of Realtors. Very dark force, and they are here in our town to subvert the will of the council, and I believe the will of the people. And that is, of course, to have, be able to have local home rule in our town. So we get to decide more about what we want to do here in our town, rather than Sacramento deciding. Well, Sacramento doesn't like that idea. And the most powerful lobbying group in California, California Association of Realtors, has descended on our town. And I just checked recently the numbers with the registrar of voters, how much money they are dumping into our town, and it is prodigious. It's just huge. So far, the National Association of Realtors has a war chest of $60,000, and then the California Association of Realtors has another $25,000. And that's just up till now, well, actually, up until recently. There could be much more. So this stands to be perhaps the second-most expensive election in Emeryville history, and it's just very disturbing. And I think everybody should know that we are going to be barraged with these lobbyists who don't want to let us make our town the way that we see fit. Instead, they want to make the town safe for profit-maximizing for realtors. And I just think that we should resist this, and I think everybody should know that it's going to be most likely in excess of $100,000 spent by these outside lobbying firms trying to tell us what to do, and we should reject that utterly, I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Nora has made a motion on the consent.
I'll second it.
Call the question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nothing else on this agenda? With that, that meeting is adjourned.
Seconds, catch-up.
Okay. All right, now moving on to the green agenda for the evening. This is the Emeryville City Council regular meeting agenda. Again, we're all here, and we have a special order of the day. Dr. Tram Kumamoto is here. Hi, welcome.
Hi.
I actually have to pull up this part.
I have some materials for you.
Could you hand those to the city clerk, please?
Good evening, Mayor Asher, Vice Mayor Atkins, and council members West Brinkman and Davis. My name is Tram Vokumamoto. I'm the Vice President of Instruction at Berkeley City College. It's my honor to be here representing the college and Dr. Budd, and to thank you for joining us in our 40th anniversary celebrations this year. As you know, Berkeley City College prides ourselves in providing educational opportunities for our local community, promoting student success, and transforming lives. Similar to your work, we strive to help our communities in providing opportunities for upward mobility and advancement in providing their families, kids, with other trajectories. And so I'm here to personally invite you to our celebration kickoff, which will be next Friday on the 17th. It starts at 4:30, and it goes into the evening. So I'm hoping that you all could come and join us in the celebrations. And, you know, one of the things that we take pride in at Berkeley City is that we work very hard to be one of the top transfer colleges. We are very small, but we're like the second in percentages to students who transfer to UCs. And so we provide a breadth of programs and opportunities, anywhere from the arts to our science and biotech program, so all the ranges in between.
Thank you. Ruth has a question?
Well, first of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming tonight. And it's nice to hear that statistic about the high rate of transfers. But if I followed the news correctly, community colleges will be in a position to offer four-year degrees. Is that true?
It is a pilot program that we are starting out as a system. There are 15 community colleges that have been identified to provide some work in that direction. It is a five-year plan to start investigating that, and it is kind of in the system of looking at how we work with the four-year universities as well. So the programs that we would be offering at the bachelor's level in our community college system as a whole would be in areas that our four years wouldn't already be offering or in areas in which our four years might not have the capacity to increase, such as nursing in certain areas, not us. Our Cal State programs here actually do a very good job in doing that. But in rural areas, nursing would definitely be a bachelor's program that some of our sister colleges in the system would be looking at, as well as fire tech or machine tool. So since these industries are requiring our students to go ahead and get bachelor's degrees to be successful in their trajectories, that's why we're hoping to step up to be able to provide that as a community college system. Berkeley City is not a part of the 15, but we are definitely, you know, keeping our eye on what's going on at the state level and working with our other community colleges that are in the efforts to see how it goes and to definitely see how we might be able to contribute to it if it were to come.
Well, again, thank you for that information. And I just want to give a shout-out for the work that you do and all of Peralta and your allied institutions, because it's at the community college level where people who wouldn't have dreamed of getting higher education can get a foothold in and a career pathway. And so I want to commend the faculty and the staff who are dedicated to giving your students an opportunity that they may not otherwise have.
Yeah, thank you very much. We enjoy our work and, you know, it brings us every day new challenges and new experiences.
Dr. Kumamoto, I have a quick comment, and then I have a proclamation to read for you. The first thing I want to say is I've taught now at two different UC campuses, and my experience as an instructor there has led me to believe that transfer students are some of the finest students we have at the UCs. They're getting a terrific preparation at the community college level. And I, you know, it's obvious to me that they come in very, very well-prepared. And so I just want to thank everyone in Peralta, everyone at BCC, who does this really important work, and also just very fine, high-quality work around teaching that I think doesn't get recognized enough. But I, myself, am very grateful for the work of you and your colleagues on a daily basis.
Thank you very much. Our faculty and staff work really hard to focus on learning, and we are very lucky to have very small class sizes in comparison to our other higher ed institutions. And so we take advantage of that and really work closely with our students to provide them with opportunities to really engage with the subject matter and to really, our classes sometimes are like seminars.
Yeah.
So, you know, we are kind of a very unique place in the higher ed landscape.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation for you. This is a proclamation congratulating Berkeley City College on the year-long celebration of their 40th anniversary of transforming lives by providing opportunities in higher education within our community. Whereas Berkeley City College's commitment to students, its community, and life transformations for all is reflected in its year-long 40th anniversary celebration, which begins Friday, October 17. And whereas Berkeley City College in its 40 years, first as the Berkeley Learning Pavilion, then as Peralta College for Non-Traditional Study, then as Vista Community College, and since 2006 as Berkeley City College, has created pioneering, innovative curricula in the arts, the sciences, the liberal arts, and humanities, in the social and behavioral sciences, in modern languages, and occupational education. And whereas Berkeley City College's mission is to promote student success, to provide our diverse community with educational opportunities, and to transform lives by serving all who enter the Berkeley City College's learning community. And whereas Berkeley City College embraces a student-centered culture, I can testify to this, right, which fosters academic excellence, professional success, and lifelong learning. And whereas Berkeley City College's and the Peralta College's commitment to higher education enhance the quality of student lives and significantly contribute to our community's intellectual growth, socioeconomic mobility, and the economic development. And whereas Berkeley City College works closely with the Peralta Community College District's Chancellor and Board of Trustees to strongly support faculty, staff, and student diversity at all Peralta campuses, now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Jack Asher, Mayor of the City of Emeryville, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby congratulate Berkeley City College on their celebration of 40 years of transforming lives and on their continuing and significant contributions to higher education and to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and your support.
Okay, now's the time for public comments.
Okay, I would like to piggyback on the comments I made at the successor agency public comments section just a few moments ago. For those watching on television that perhaps didn't see that, I just wanted to remind, or just warn everybody in Emeryville, that we are being barraged right now with a major campaign directed from Sacramento, from the National Association of Realtors and the California Association of Realtors. And what they are doing is they are spending, so far, some $85,000 on our town to try to convince people here to vote against their own best interests. And that would be to be able to form a charter city here so that we can rule our city as we best see fit, rather than as Sacramento is dictating to us. And that's called Measure U. And then similarly, Measure V, which is, will permit us to institute a real estate transfer fee, which will make it so that we can fund infrastructure in our city and have maintenance for the existing infrastructure. It's really critical. And this group of realtors, out-of-town lobbying group from Sacramento, the most powerful lobbying group in Sacramento, is trying to stop us and trying to tell us that we shouldn't, we can't do that, and I think we should reject this utterly. And I wanted to put a face to this, what I'm calling dark force. And that would be one man that used to live in Emeryville, now he's moved out of our town, and that would be Mr. Jason Crouch, who is on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and he is directing this barrage of lobbying money, out-of-town lobbying money to descend on our town. This is a man that says he loves Emeryville just the way it is now, and we shouldn't do anything to change it. What he's not acknowledging is that we're on a glide path to insolvency over the years as our budget becomes ever more constrained. And furthermore, this man loves Emeryville so much that he moved out of Emeryville and he now lives in Vallejo. So I don't think we should take a guy like that seriously. And I think it's, he's also, he is going against his own Emeryville Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. He's on the board, and the Board of Directors has voted to endorse and support Measures U and V, and this gentleman, Mr. Crouch, is subverting his own Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, doesn't live in Emeryville, directing this outside force of lobbying lobbyists to descend on our town and print a whole bunch of untruths and falsehoods. And I just think it's reprehensible, and I think we should reject it utterly, and I think people should vote yes on Measure U and yes on Measure V. Thank you.
Thank you. City managers' report?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things tonight. We have the groundbreaking ceremony next Thursday, October 16th, for the ECCL over at the 47th Street corner. The public is invited. It's at 10 o'clock in the morning. You're more than welcome to come out. You'll see some shovels, we'll be moving some dirt. And that, again, it's 10 o'clock on October 16th at the 47th and San Pablo corner, or entrance, rather. And then also, we have a series of informational events on Measures U and V, just nonpartisan information events. One, several have been set up, and I'm just going to read them for the benefit of the public watching at home. I'll be going to Watergate on October 20th at 6:00. We'll be at the 45th Street Artist Co-op on October 15th at 7:00 PM. The Doyle Cohousing at, I'm sorry, this Thursday, the 9th at 7:30 PM, and 1500 Park on the 22nd at 6:30 PM. The League of Women Voters will be joining us. Feel free to come out, and you can ask questions about the measures. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar. I wanted to pull item 5.4, though.
I move the rest of the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Okay. Anyone else? We did have, oh.
Jack, could I just ask Sabrina a question? Given that this is an informational, these are informational meetings on U and V, can you reach out to the senior center? Like tomorrow, there's going to be a meeting of the commission, and they've had some information, but I've had a lot of questions from the seniors over there, and I think it would be critical that we give a presentation like you're giving in the rest of the city.
Definitely. We've been trying to find a date over at the senior center.
House tomorrow at 10 o'clock.
We could look into that if we can make it work. And then I will also share, we have additional meetings we're trying to set up over at Bayside Park and also at Pacific Park Plaza. But we'll look into the 10 o'clock tomorrow.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. With that, there, I just want to make a note that there were some changes to the professional services agreement, and we have these up here on our dais. And then I had another request with regard to the PSA, and that is in Section 8, where it outlines the nondiscrimination categories. I'd like gender identity added to that, and I would like to see that happen every time we have one of these come in front of us.
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor? I have- Mayor, I have a question, or actually, it's a request.
Okay.
And this is on page 20, this is the draft EIR schedule. You know, this project has been hanging around here, it seems like forever, and I looked at this EIR schedule, and it is really puffy. Is there any way we can look at that schedule again, tighten it up, move it along, do the work thoroughly and competently, but in a, in a better time schedule? You're talking a whole year out, if you really look at the schedule.
I would just say that's typical for an EIR, that's basically how long an EIR takes. There's a lot of steps along the way. If you look at each step, none of the steps is particularly out of the ordinary. Having said that, we have met now with the applicant and our EIR consultant twice to try to see where we can tighten up the schedule, and we are continuing with those discussions with them. So we're going to, you know, chop off a week here, a week there, as much as we can.
That's much appreciated. I'd move approval with the substitutions or the additions.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we're on to item 6.1, this is a public hearing, resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing the police department to issue a cabaret permit to Off the Grid. Chief James.
Good evening, Mayor Asher, members of the council. Before you tonight is a resolution authorizing the police department to issue a cabaret license to Off the Grid. Off the Grid is a company that puts on food truck events. We've had an event weekly here next to the city hall for the past year. They have recently entered into an agreement with the Marketplace to put on an event in the Marketplace East parking lot, and they have been going on with it. Off the Grid feels that the, having background music, therefore, the patrons of the event will be beneficial to the event. They plan on having it between the hours of 10 and 2. Our investigation showed nothing for which we could recommend denying the, the permit, so the staff's recommendation to council is to open a public hearing, take public comment, and then approve the resolution authorizing the permit.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question of the chief? Can you tell me about the noticing for this public hearing, and who was noticed?
Yes, the noticing went out to everybody within 300 feet of where the event is being held. It was mailed out on September 29, no, September 26. We sent them out in the mail, it was a Friday, and we've gotten some back undeliverable, but most of them have stayed out.
Received any comments?
No comments have been received.
Thank you.
Is PPP within 300 feet?
Yes.
You got nothing back?
Nothing back.
Bizarre.
And the terraces?
Terraces were, were noticed also. Nothing back.
Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing. Don't want to be heard? Okay.
Is the applicant here? Would he like to say anything?
Is the applicant here? Oh, I'm sorry.
He's over there, I saw him.
He was hoping the meeting was going to go to midnight.
The applicant is here. Hello.
Hi.
I think, thank you very much, Chief James, for getting us on tonight, and thank you for having me, some of you guys know me. I think the music aspect is going to run for two hours on a Saturday, from 12 to 2 in the middle of the day. It's a really important aspect of what we try to do. We continue to try to have Off the Grid in Emeryville and be successful, and we think it's a really positive thing for the community, and I hope that you guys vote in favor of allowing us to do music. With that, I open up questions.
Questions for council? None?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, public hearing is now closed.
Move the resolution.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great food.
Okay, we're on to item 10, communication and reports, department heads.
I have my report, my monthly report for you on the planning commission. Their meeting, actually, their September meeting was moved one week back to avoid a conflict with Rasha Shana. So there's two meetings actually in, in October, the 2nd and the 30th. So their October 2 meeting last week, they approved the housing element with a recommendation to you to adopt it, and that will be coming to you at your November 18 meeting. They also held four study sessions. Three were on major development projects, including the two proposed housing projects at the Marketplace redevelopment site and the 3706 San Pablo Avenue Affordable Housing Project, and they made a lot of good comments on all of those. Those three projects will be coming back to the commission either for further study sessions or for decision hearings in the coming months. The exact dates haven't been scheduled yet, but it will be likely in the first part of 2015. And then finally, they held a study session on the draft recommendations for the Emeryville Berkeley Oakland Transit Study, or EBS, and I would note that a study session before you on this item is scheduled for your next meeting, October 21st. And since the first item is coming to you for a decision, and the other four were study sessions, none of these items are appealable to the city council. I also have one other announcement. I think you got this in your email this afternoon, but I would just like to point out, you should have before you a flyer, actually, two, one in English, one in Spanish, for the affordable housing program at the Park on Powell Apartments. These are the BMR, the Below Market Rate Units, at this project, I believe it's 21 units. The pre-application period is now open, it started yesterday, and it runs through October 31st. Details and the way to fill out the form and submit it are at parkonpowell.com/affordable. And applications, or I should say, pre-applications are being accepted only by US mail, and they are due by, they have to be postmarked by October 31st, and all of the information about how to submit is at that website.
Thank you, Charlie. Anyone else, department heads? No? Okay. Council members? Reporting on meetings attended? Oh my, we're just moving right through it then. Okay.
Hope to see everybody on Friday.
That's great. And with that, there's nothing left on the agenda, so, meeting adjourned, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Go on, Jack.